The meeting is called to order. Clerk call to roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Craftcheck?
Here.
Mr. Parsick?
Here.
The meeting is now open. Adequate notice of the meeting was provided by posting a copy of the time and place on the municipal clerk's bulletin board and mailing a copy of same to the press and the Kate McCity Herald on January 8th, 2017. As you all know, two tragic incidents occurred in our country in the last week. Eight people killed and 11 injured in an act of terrorism in Lower Manhattan on October 31st. Twenty-six people killed and 20 injured at the First Baptist Church in Sutherland, Texas on November 6th. We cannot accept these acts of violence and terror as the new world we live in and go about our business without acknowledging the inhumanity of these acts. This cannot become our world. We need to acknowledge these. We need to not be a part of anything unkind and we need to also see something, say something. We cannot accept this as what our world has become. Please remain standing after the Pledge of Allegiance for a moment of silence to honor the victims, their families, and the first responders involved in these two horrific incidents. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any communications?
No, ma'am, we don't.
At this time, we will have public comment. Anyone wishing to address mayor and council may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thanks again for inviting me. Matthew Pappas, Brandywine Developers. Sounds like everyone has received the memo we drafted and, one, I want to say this is some collaborated feedback from numerous contractors. I obviously started drafting it, circulated amongst some of the contractors that are listed below, signed, and others. So, that said, it sounds like we kind of want to concentrate on any comments surrounding the new ordinances versus getting into other feedback addressed throughout the memo? Or should I kind of lay it all out there or concentrate the efforts on the new ordinances?
I would suggest lay it all out there.
Yeah, lay it out there.
We're here.
Thank you. One, I tried to stress, it's obvious that as a whole, us contractors have to do a bare job of policing and regulating existing ordinances beyond what we're talking about, new, trailer parking, equipment parking, something as simple as sweeping the sidewalks. We stress it, but at the same token, in the heat of the battle within the summer, what we call push of delivering houses around Memorial Day and 4th of July, admittedly, details slip through the cracks. So, in the last meeting, the term "respect" was mentioned a lot. I think that is the bottom line. Communication from us to surrounding neighbors and us as a team showing the utmost respect to those neighbors. It starts there and unfortunately, if that was the theme of every job site, I don't think we'd be here debating any of this. It's not, and we are. So, how do we help the problem? One, I don't think, I don't know if this is something that would be added to a new ordinance, but I noted in the letter, possibly making it mandatory to any contractor that pulls a reno or new construction permit has to have some type of form letter that the construction office, tax assessor, whoever it might be, can circulate to the block, to five neighbors adjacent to it. It needs to list a principal or a form in the cellphone, email. I did notice we noted such a letter. I have a feeling my assistant might have not attached the example of our form letter when we circulated this, but it basically introduces us as a company, admits that over the next 10 months to a year, we are going to be an inconvenience. We are building a house literally 10 feet away from your house. That said, we're going to do our best, but when we fall short, when we fall short, here's my cellphone. Bud or Dan is my foreman running this job. That's his cellphone. Here are emails. Here's the office number. Please contact us surrounding anything. It has seemed over the years to be a very effective tool for us to kind of self-police a lot of these issues. Parking. We mentioned, I noted, the beach block properties. If you're building on the north side of the beach block versus the south side, we can't, by the letter of law, follow your current ordinance. It's not possible. There is no parking in front of that. And that means I need to have a dumpster. We need to have a trailer, sometimes two, but let's just call it one, and you need to have, you know, some in-and-out lumber deliveries. So, logistically, it's just not possible. Maybe the answer is communicate to the neighbors, communicate with the police department, communicate with Mike. Last year, a prime example, we had two going on, on one, the same beach block, both on the north side. They allowed us to park our dumpster all the way up against the bulkhead on the south side and the neighbors on, I'm sorry, on the north side and the neighbors on the south side allowed us to park in front of their property during the week. On the weekends, it was an unwritten rule that everything other than a dumpster would be removed. It seemed to work out well and we were able to pull off two homes with, I think, minimal complaints. I'm sure there were complaints, but minimal complaints. So, I don't know what the answer is to address those specific scenarios or if it just goes down to use your head and communicate and if someone's not complaining, you can park in front of other people's properties. But if we're trying to set a guideline, a set of guidelines, both existing and new, that us as the business owners are going to stress to our team to follow, maybe we should address those unique situations.
Yeah, I don't want to interrupt here, but I think it goes without saying that there should be, like Mr. Pappas pointed out, and I run into this personally myself, too, there's as many people that might be adjacent to a construction site that would complain, but there's also equally, and you just don't hear from them because they're not complaining, that are happy that you're doing the job in the way that you're doing it and are happy to help you. So, that being said, I think there should, it goes without saying, there should be some sort of provision whereby a contractor is able to get permission from a neighbor and not be in violation of this ordinance so that he may park a dumpster or a trailer in front of another person's property permissively so because he's being allowed to do so. And I found that when, like we just talked about, when you speak to the neighbors, they're more than happy to help if it's not an inconvenience to them, especially in the off-season. We've routinely removed trailers from other people's in front of their house. They're happy to let us use it Monday through Friday, but they say if we come down Friday, please take it away, and we do so. So, that's some level of, especially in the beach block, as you talked about, a way to perhaps manage that situation where there's no clear, easy way to maneuver there. But anyway, that's just my interim thought. Please continue.
No, and I agree, and that happens all the time. What we guys don't see is what that communication leads to is very healthy dialogue amongst neighbors and the contractor and foreman. You know, project we're finishing up on 118th Street, they got our letter, they contacted us. It was said, okay, during the off-season, no problem parking in front of our property. Thank you very much. We routinely swept his driveway and sidewalk and, you know, then he calls us, says, listen, can some of your guys help remove some furniture out of, you know, the second-story master? And I have new furniture arriving. You have a forklift on the job. It'd be very helpful if you could help us forklift the furniture up to the second-floor deck. No problem. Thanks. Here's five guys right at your disposal. I mean, it's, it can work and it's not everyone simply complaining all the time. And I know, you know, we're here because of the complaints and the boom and what have you, but I don't know how to address those isolated examples. For instance, with the roadwork that's going on, Public Works Crew and my crew have worked together on jobs to, okay, we're going to do this side of the street these next two days. I know we're in their way. Golden Gate was a prime example of, we're in the middle of a very large project and the whole street has to get redone. There were times where our stuff was not parked in front of the job site we were doing while we were clearing the way for them to pave that side of the street. And it was a big-time team effort amongst everybody, jockeying around their rollers and their backhoes and our trailers. There were days and weeks upon time that we technically were not abiding by the current ordinances surrounding where trailers were parked, how many, what have you. We did our best. I'm sure we all ticked off some clients along the way because, you know, the schedule of the street and our construction schedule, but, you know, how is that addressed? Once again, is that just use your head, communicate? But I think if we're going to look into the existing ordinances, some of these things could be noted if nothing else. The enforcement of these ordinances, I think, is something that needs to be discussed. Again, it's not something that has to be implemented into the ordinances, but, you know, the burden on Mike and Ray and the construction office and the police department currently and then upcoming with some of these additions, you've got to give them a fighting chance to enforce. And I don't know what the answer is. I suggested possibly a part-time or a full-time position within the construction department to be that code enforcement official. Not so much what Mike does now, but his sole job is to check on dumpsters. Are they covered? Are they parked in front of streets? What contractors are violating the ordinances and communicate with those contractors and find those contractors. Such a position exists in Avalon and other municipalities we work with. A lot of them do have this position. What happens is relationships are formed between he and my foreman and myself and other contractors. They all have cellphones, they're texting each other, and a lot of the issues are being addressed before Friday and Saturday when homeowners are complaining. So, I think that would, not so much maybe an ordinance, but something that we should think about and entertain implementing. Again, the communication is key. Getting to the new ordinances being proposed. A, no demolition between July 1 and Labor Day. As noted in a previous work session, yes, this is not the way it's written now, but there is no demo down the street in Avalon. It has worked out very well. The pilings is the biggest one I have an issue with, and I know talking to other colleagues of mine would be, I think, a crippling effect. Basically, if we don't have final plans and a permit before July 1, in order to drive those pilings, that job is pushed back until, you know, September 15th. What that would do from a scheduling standpoint, you know, there's only so many demo contractors, there's only so many surveyors, there's only so many piling drivers. Different companies build a different number of houses in a given year. Our magic formula is this many, but within that many, we have to spread them out. We have to spread out start dates and delivery dates. We would be going back to, everything has to start in September and try to finish it up by the season, which is not realistic. Many of these houses are getting too large and complex and too many custom details to think you're going to finish it before a year. If you can demo it prior to the demo moratorium and then drive pilings once ready, whether that's July 14th or late July, you have a fighting chance of getting the project done by the next season versus prolonging it a year from September 15th. What's key to that statement is the last month of construction, many times, is the most heavy when it comes to parking and activity. It's a lot of contractors doing very little work. They're in and out doing a five-minute adjustment. They might be there doing a half-day cleaning air filters, but there are trucks there, there are crews there, and there might be 25 trucks daily trying to go to these job sites the last two, three weeks of what we call the detailing process. By adding pilings, I really think you're going to put a lot of jobs that are currently being finished in the early spring, if you can start sometime in the early summer with demo and driving pilings, to the heart of the season right there in July.
Matt, may I interrupt for you just a moment? How long does it take you to demo a house?
I'm glad you asked. So, the demo, on an average house, the house is demoed in a day. Then you have the footing and concrete work the next day and then site grading. So, demo is not soup to nuts one day. Maybe a very, very small rancher, you can get the house and the concrete out in one day, you're still grading the following day. So, I would say it's a two, at most, three-day process.
But the actual house comes down in one day?
Correct.
And your pilings follow, how long after that?
Well, many times, we're demoing a house, whether it's for a tax reason within settlement or a real estate transaction, prior to the final plans being completed. In Avalon, it's very common, we're demoing them before the moratorium while we wait a month possibly for the plans to get completed. And then we lay out. Driving pilings, to the contrary, is, in my opinion, and most of the time, it's a half-day. Sometimes it's less than a half-day. If an average house has 50 pilings, Davenport and Lord, two weeks ago, came in and drove 50 pilings from 10 o'clock to 12 o'clock. Gone.
Does Avalon allow the driving of pilings in July and August?
Yes. The only thing restricted in Avalon between July 4th, call July 1, and the Tuesday after Labor Day is demolition.
It's a demo.
And that's all.
Again, I don't want to interrupt, but key point here is that when you demolish a house, before you drive those pilings, you have to have an engineer involved to come stake that property. You'll see the stakes that lay out. So, that doesn't happen from, you know, you're done demo, you can just call up Davenport and Lord, and obviously, like Matt said, there's only so many, I mean, I only ever use Davenport and Lord, so there's not that many people. So, their schedule permitting, you have to have them come in, but in the meantime, you need to have that property staked out so that those pilings go in exactly to the right location. So, depending on your engineer's availability, it's not one day to the next. So, it can easily be, you know, from demo, if everything goes perfectly, as much as, you know, two weeks till, assuming your plans and everything already are in play. So, it's not boom, boom as quickly as that. But I do agree with Mr. Pappas as well, that pilings are fairly innocuous compared to demo.
I always thought it would be the opposite.
Me, too, because of the noise factor.
I would think that the, I just thought that personally, that you would just get that and it would be days of it as opposed to knocking the house down and off you go with it.
I think there are places, because I think this gentleman knows, and he's setting probably the best example of building. He knows what he's doing. Other builders don't just do it in one day. I mean, yes, you hire an outside contractor, I understand that, and I know that I can tell that you know exactly what you're doing. Everyone's not like him. He's saying bing, 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 and he runs the project that way, I am sure, because he knows what he's doing.
But on average, you start driving a piling for a house. How long before you're done driving all the pilings?
Depending on who's driving.
Like you said, two hours?
Half a day, he said.
Six. Half a day to a day.
Okay. I thought it was like a week.
Well, it depends on who's driving the pilings. You get the good guy, you're going to get it done.
I'd like...
And the size of the house, too.
And the size of the house and everything.
Joan, for instance, I think you're the one, Golden Gate, we built across from you. That house had pilings for the house, 120 of them, and then another 100 pilings to support the travertine elevated pool deck. Bad example, but that took two days to drive pilings.
But it was two days? Eight hours each day?
That was 220 pilings. An average house and decks and pool have 65 to 70 pilings.
Okay.
And thank you for the compliment. Yes, we try to run a tight ship, but the organization is, okay, demo is here, we have a permit in hand. How far out did you save that date for your surveyor? He's there hopefully within days. Once the piling guy shows up, whether they're good or bad, they want to get on to the next job. They can't have their equipment tied up on that job for a number of days. And if it is tied up on that job for a number of days, it's not creating noise. Davenport is, in my opinion, very, very efficient. They do it a little bit faster than the next guy in line. But the demo, from a noise and timing standpoint, I would say is at least a day and a half from start to finish, longer than the pilings. And I do think if the, you know, the scare is someone's renting a house for a lot of money next door and that Wednesday or Tuesday or Monday we're driving pilings, I can easily communicate to those neighbors better that we're going to be in and out of here very quickly than if we're starting demo that Monday. If we start mon, you know, demo that Monday, yes, we are ruining their rental vacation. I mean, I admit that.
By the same token, with regard to pilings, it's, you know, at least a couple hours, at most maybe a day. But in item D, you know, essentially, I mean, we outlaw Sundays here during the season and then the holidays, obviously, but item D contemplates allowing work all, I mean, work on Saturdays for indoor work, but then you have your normal work all week long anyway. So, in my mind, what's the sense of including pilings in this? Because...
Because they're working anyway during the week?
Right. It's not, it's just going to back up the, it's just going to back up, like Mr. Pappas said, the inventory from being delivered on time in a timely manner to later in the summer.
Yeah. One of two things are going to happen. We would have to take on, you know, a lot less jobs because we're not able to coordinate and schedule and spread them out amongst the calendar year. They would all, in a roundabout way, with how busy it is, they would all fall to start in September. And then it would be an absolute race to try to get them out of the gates efficiently. And you can't use my in-house framers to frame the one that starts in June to move to the one that starts in September. You're creating it going to, all your jobs start in the same month. And then some people will be the first ones in line and other people are going to be the second and third ones in line, and they have no chance of their project being done timely because you're putting them behind the April, a month and a half to two months easy with the scenario that would take place in September if pilings were included here. You know, it's hard enough for the demo contractors to schedule in Avalon right now. It still is a production line in September. But those are the houses that, you know, there were some delays in plans and, you know, settlement, and they weren't able to knock the house down before July 1. And as a contractor, you know, okay, I have this many spots that I can save to start in September. The key is to plan and get those other ones demoed and ready to go. So, of all of the new ordinances and all the details amongst the new ordinances, that is my biggest concern. And I think, I know I speak for all of my colleagues in saying that. That would be, that'd be tragic.
So, okay. Can you explain on B, the heavy equipment? What do you define as heavy equipment? I mean, as it speaks here, it says, no heavy equipment. I want to know the definition of a heavy equipment.
It's a great question. And I, I mentioned that in my memo. I don't know how to, I know how I define heavy equipment. I think that's a lot different than what a neighbor next door is going to define heavy equipment. Something as simple as starting a generator.
Generator, okay.
I wouldn't consider that heavy equipment. It's probably the loudest piece of equipment I own. Starting a compressor, that's enough to wake not only the neighbors up, but the people across the street up. A for, you know, by definition, I would say a forklift and my genie booms that we do trim work off of would be the only pieces of equipment I would consider heavy equipment. And if that was defined and you said you can't use them before 9 o'clock, no problem. I think the real issue, just a heads up, is the generators, the compressors, what have you.
And you added radios as a suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
So, maybe it's no mechanical equipment.
Something to think about. Okay.
You're just left with a hammer.
How about the Saturdays? What's your feeling on that?
Nail gun.
So, you're going down, well, number B, or, I'm sorry, letter B.
Okay.
Yes, defining heavy equipment. Difference between 8 o'clock and 9 o'clock, again, if you're communicating with these neighbors and many times, if it's not a rental property, you've already talked to them before the framers get to the site. And if something gets started bef, you know, currently 10 minutes before 8, no one's complaining. I think if you left it at heavy equipment, I would be thrilled because heavy equipment, if an officer or someone enforcing this ordinance, I don't think they would consider a generator or compressor heavy equipment.
Yeah, we would, we would have to really specify what is heavy equipment.
Heavy equipment normally is bulldozers and things like that. That's traditionally what heavy equipment is.
Okay.
Yeah, but we don't have any bulldozers. I'm not starting my forklift before 9 o'clock.
So, I guess I keep thinking loud. When I think heavy equipment, I think loud equipment, so I'm think, I think saws, but I'm not think, you know, when I, when I'm, because I'm thinking noise, so I'm not thinking dump, so, okay, so you could run a saw. Okay.
Yeah, because your start time is 8 o'clock.
Now, here's the thing, though. So, let's say J.L. Davis or Pineland or one of them come to pick up a dumpster before. They're on the street, they're legal, they're picking up a dumpster which is in the street. That's heavy equipment, clearly. They're backing up, they pull that. What are we doing with that? Is that...
Yeah, if it's about noise, what are you doing with the landscaper that pulls up and starts mowing the lawn on Saturday?
Right. They do it all the time.
Runs the weed whacker. My forklift isn't making that much more noise than the lawn mower.
No, not in the yard.
I see the intent.
I think the intent is the congestion of big equipment being postponed till 9 o'clock. Big, I'm thinking big equipment, not, I don't disagree about the noise with a weed whacker either. But I think that the congestion of it all, showing up all at 8 o'clock, might be what I think is happening. Or before 8.
Exactly.
Not you.
No, no, hey. Trust me, we've started them up before 8, but with permission from the neighbors. Leave it as heavy equipment. I think it allows us to, you know, roll out, you know, in the summertime, you know, we, many of these houses have cabanas. We put our, all year round, we're putting our compressors and generators inside the outbuilding that's framed and it, I could start that up at 7 o'clock and the neighbor might not hear it. I might not wake them up. Now, if it's out in the open, you're waking up the block. So, I think be as is. I can't speak for everybody, but I really don't see that being problematic from us. I can't speak for everybody, but I really don't see that being problematic from us making a living and moving on doing more trades. No work on Sundays, you know, no problem from me. And whether that's in season or all year round, again, I don't really see that as an issue. I do believe that might be a written ordinance in Avalon, and it's kind of understood that if someone complains, cops are called, you're shut down. If you're behind schedule and you need to work on Sunday, make it painting on the outside, or make it inside light work, and if no one complains and you're discreet about it, we know you have a schedule to keep. But again, use your head, if you're not using your head, that means the neighbor's gonna complain. Shut us down, and if, you know, you're a repeat violator for Sunday working, having to be told not to work, second offense, start throwing fines at us. I have no problem with the Sunday letter C. No work Memorial Day weekend, any of the holidays, Fourth of July, Labor Day weekend, absolutely. I mean, you're just asking for a complaint doing anything. My contractors and employees don't even like to come into town those days, because they know if they try to get something done, they're gonna tick someone off and there's gonna be a confrontation. So, get all the trailers out, pick up your dumpsters, give as many people as much parking as you can, and come back Monday. In other municipalities, we actually get a letter two days before those holidays, in big, bold letters. You guys know the rules? Don't you dare work Friday, Saturday, everyone knows Fourth of July is Friday. So, you know, sending that email out to the contractors to reiterate it, for us to go ahead and mass email our team and our subs would be a good step, I feel. The Saturday work, not only me, but I know that was something that numerous contractors came up and were commenting on your last work session. I think the way you guys described it interior work, but you're allowed to cut outside, leave it at that, I think it's gonna be very tough to enforce, you know, define what, it's leaving a lot of gray area. Painting on outside, window cleaning, detailing, historically, all the things that on a Saturday, beside interior work, what are we trying to get done on a Saturday in the high season to meet a deadline? Many times, it's not stuff that's making a lot of noise. If you're not done the roofing and the siding and the framing and the extra trim work by the season, assuming that house is trying to be completed for some time in the near future, you know, go ahead and take the weekends off, you've missed it, you're not gonna make your deadline. If you're not doing window cleaning, landscaping, painting, I think should all be things that are virtually no noise, as long as you limit the radios. I think that is less noise than a tile layer doing inside work with his wet saw set up outside. The only thing maybe would be the skylift that many of the painters use to paint the high stuff. Maybe you put in there, you know, outside work, limit to heavy equipment. I would consider that a piece of heavy equipment, but at least gives the painters a chance to work on a Saturday. We've had plenty of weeks where Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, it rains. If we're not allowed to paint on Saturday, you know, we're disappointing our client, I can tell you that.
Perhaps interior is not the correct word, but this was, as I mentioned before, meant to really be a middle ground, so that you can't possibly have someone cutting hardwood flooring or wet saw with tile outside, and then also have roofing, siding, trim, so you can't have this confluence of all these trades at one time on a Saturday. But certainly, the intent is not, in my mind, to prevent innocuous work like painting, window washing and all that to take place on the exterior of a structure during a Saturday. This is more of, I would say, a middle ground to help alleviate some of that. Really, I think what it came down to was the pneumatic guns that are involved in siding or roofing that are repetitive and constant during that time period, so. That was really, so perhaps interior is not the correct word, and that's why this discussion is really good to sort of ferret out what needs to be tweaked.
Yeah, because also, too, if it's gray, it's tough to enforce for the police, and if you're on a Saturday, and then you've got the cops are there trying to figure out, well, I'm inside 95% of the time.
So perhaps.
Are trying to figure it all out, and then it leads to summonses in court and the whole thing, and then it leads to somebody telling us, well, you weren't specific enough, and.
No doubt about it, this is.
If it could just not be so gray.
Yeah, this is an enforcement nightmare on many levels, and we've said that from the beginning. However, I think, as with any of our ordinances, push comes to shove, it's really when a complaint is registered and a simple, hey, you're not allowed to do that today, and it doesn't stop, then it becomes an issue for the courts. And hopefully, that ordinance defines what is and what isn't acceptable, and it's adhered to pretty stringently from the get-go, but also when there's a neighbor that says, hey, you're not supposed to be doing that, it stops immediately at that.
Well, Mark, question for you, what would be more effective, saying what is not permitted or what is permitted?
And that was my next comment, maybe we should just be saying no roofing, no siding, no trim.
That was gonna be my comment, I could give you a list right now, and it would cover all your complaints. And it would just be comma, 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 comma.
If you're gonna violate what's expressly prohibited.
It's easier.
You make it easier for the, in an enforcement capacity, to come in and say, okay, this is a checklist item, it's clearly not permitted, boom. Otherwise, it's subject to some speculation.
Agreed.
Yeah.
And I think Charles hit the nail on the head. Generator, compressor, pneumatic gun, throw heavy equipment in there again.
So you can, yeah, I think from an enforcement aspect, and it seems like that's your intent, too.
That would be, that would make it easier.
Yeah, that opens up, still, the interior guys are doing the work. I could give that some thought and pull some, you know, if we're gonna have, I don't think we're gonna have this contractors meeting about the new items. If we are, I can certainly, you know, have some people give that some thought, but I think noting what's not allowed, what addresses the noise, I think is, like you guys said, a first start, baby steps, and let's see how people react to that.
Matt, let me ask you this question. With the ones that you saw on here, for compromise, if we did away with A and kept all the other ones, you'd be okay, or the contractors would be okay?
Me personally, I would be thrilled if you got away, got rid of A, yes. That is by far the biggest, that's the one significant one that hurts my business.
So it's compromise.
But not only just driving of pilings, correct?
No, the.
If you give me an inch, I'm gonna take a mile, she said for A.
Oh, okay, oh, okay. All right.
That's why I'm saying.
Move it all together.
I'm saying it's a compromise, if he's willing, if we're willing to give up A and he accepts all the rest, then it's probably a pretty good scenario.
Okay.
I think Saturdays should be better defined, for your own sake. The way it's left now and the way you guys described it, as you can be doing inside work, but still using saws and what have you outside, I'll be fine, and again, I think the enforcement on a Saturday is, if a neighbor complains, you're shut down. Well, as a contractor, use your head and make sure the neighbor doesn't complain. If the painters are there, don't turn the radio on, set up in the back of the house, use ladders, not the machine, and watch your language and, you know, have a productive day.
Yeah, it's mostly common sense, and that's kind of the way it exists now for the most part, so.
Yeah, and on Sunday, again, you're self-polishing yourself. If you have interior hardware and towel bars and accessories, and you have a guy that's willing to come in on Sunday and get ahead of your punch list, you know, pull in, park illegally, go inside, lock the door, and you'll be fine. So, yes, A is the biggest one. This is just minor E. Again, I think it should be contractor, builder only. For me to try to post a sign, job the job, that's professionally done and not just handwritten on, you know, a piece of paper. We have a few painters we use, we have a few masons we use. I would say in our operation, we probably have the most consistency amongst the contractors being used over and over again. Other operations, they have four masons, four plumbers. Trying to create a sign per job that lists the correct subcontractors associated to that job seems a little unrealistic.
Well, you put your sign up with your name on it, on the property, so that should almost be good enough. If you have your phone number and that, and let you handle the brunt of it, and why do we have to worry about the rest of them? You're responsible for your workers.
I don't think E contemplates all the subs.
This was put in because.
I think it just contemplates the general contractor.
Our original ordinance, an ordinance already in existence, clearly indicates that all permits must be prominently displayed. This seemed a simple way so that everybody could post their permits along with their information. There are so many job sites where they don't put a name, where the trucks are not marked, you don't know who the builder is. We're talking to one good contractor, there are a few good, but you're not making ordinances for the good ones, because they're already doing it.
Good point.
But I think Mr. Pappas's point is that he doesn't want to list every subcontractor, and I think.
I'm not asking him to.
He's not.
My point is that E really just contemplates that you have.
The contractor.
A box with your.
When you say the contractor, you mean the general.
I was reacting to nuts on.
We're just you.
Right, that's what I think he's thinking, he needs subs as well.
No, we need the contractor.
He's thinking of, he's thinking of the main builder. He's thinking contractor, somebody that paints.
That's a sub.
Well, they're his contractors.
That's right, they're sub contractors.
There's subs, you're.
Don't worry about it.
The way he is writing is fine. I was reacting to one of the comments someone made about having contact information for numerous subs. That's the only reason I brought that up.
At the last meeting, somebody said that.
No, and tonight's, I think, well, regardless, I, my sign, you know, contractor sign posted, and then have another box that's watertight with all the permit cards in it, no problem. The permit cards really aren't gonna help a neighbor track myself or my foreman down. That starts with job site sign.
I don't think that's what you're looking for.
And the letters of communication. Because my sign has my office, but on Saturday, if you call my office and you don't email me or call my cell or text me, you're not gonna get an immediate reaction, and that, I think, starts with this letter that is mandatory. If the goal is to have better communication amongst the public and the neighbors, they need to have a resource to call, Monday through Sunday. And we have guys set up that if I get a text, or the guy on call gets that text or that email, you know, the issue's trying to be addressed timely, and nine times out of 10, that makes it go away. So, to answer your question, E, as it's written now, we are, that is commonplace in many other municipalities. It's a watertight box, you buy it online for 15 bucks, you screw it to your temple, and all the permit cards and even a sealed copy of plans sometimes is in there. I don't know if you're gonna start going down that road, but it would have other levels of communication and names for someone to, you know, look at. Clearly defined, if someone doesn't want to pay the money for signs, it's another way to identify yourself as a builder of record on that job.
Got it.
Lot of good information.
So, does anybody have any specific questions from Matt?
No, if they were all like him, we wouldn't have a problem.
It is interesting to talk to somebody when you, because I had a whole other vision of the driving of pilings versus the demolition. So it is good to talk to somebody that actually is in the field and clarified the difference in which one is actually more obtrusive to a neighbor than another. So, what's everybody's pleasure? We're going to bring it for first reading in two weeks, but in the meantime, who is going to take the lead on setting up any future meeting with construction officials?
Jill. I'll be glad to take the lead, I just need to know who's going to be in on these meetings.
Okay.
Will you volunteer?
We can only have three of us.
I need, right.
Well, I think.
Do you want it all of council, or do you want a subcommittee, I just need a little more direction.
Karen, would you like to, would you like to work with Ray on that?
Yes, I think it should be, I think this gets too, too much is brought in from so many different areas, and when you have a huge group like this, you don't resolve anything. It's much better to bring forward something that's in a condensed version and look at it from there.
And go, right, I would agree with that. So, that being said, if we've got Jill taking the lead and Ray and Karen working with them.
You want your subcommittee?
Do you want a third?
I mean, that. I'll sit in, yeah, I mean, I have relevant knowledge to all of this.
And Karen.
Am I right or wrong?
Whatever.
So you want A and F, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
No, because that's Mantura.
Do it with A and F.
Right, you want, because that knocks out Ray.
Take it back to A and F. Take it back to A and F.
You okay?
Yeah.
Just bumped you.
Sorry.
You just got bumped, Ray.
You just got thrown off, Ray.
That's okay, I just want these guys, I want these individuals to be heard.
Okay, okay.
You know, and then you guys reach a conclusion, what you want to do.
You have my email from the memo?
I do, so I'll reach out to you, you'll be my point of contact this afternoon.
Yes, ma'am. I would encourage Mike from the construction office and somebody representing the police department, too. Because they're the ones who I think we need to hear out when it comes to the enforcement of whatever, you know, comes about.
They were present for the initial meetings with the council subcommittee.
Oh, great, okay, well, then that's covered. And then from my end, two, three contractors, you guys tell me how many you want me to bring along?
I think three would be fair.
Three, okay.
All right, I'll reach out tomorrow.
I would say, maybe let's ask Mike, which are, you know, the top four people. Mike Kuchmer. What are the top four people who hold permits, you know what I mean? So that's gonna end up being probably yourself, it's probably gonna be DL Minor, you know what I mean? So that we're getting, we're getting the contractors that have the most number of permits.
The busier ones.
To really weigh in, because they.
I would, I would prefer that Mike actually be the one that facilitates a list.
Okay, Jill can get together with Mike on that.
I can handle that.
Can you handle that? All right, you're in good hands. So Jill will be in touch with you, okay.
Great, look forward to it, Jill.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Again, thanks again for opening it up to the public last time and inviting me to this, means a lot.
Thanks, thank you.
Jill, we'll get minutes from that sub-meeting that you're going to hold with all those, the rest of council?
What was that?
The rest of council will get minutes from the sub-meeting you're holding with the contractors.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We shall be kept apprised.
Yes, you will.
Okay, so, everybody ready, moving on? Oh, I still, I forgot. Anybody else wishing to address mayor and council at this time? Come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing nobody, we will close public comment. Ordinance 1509.
Madam Mayor and Council, I'd like to make a motion. That ordinance 1509 be taken up on second reading.
All those in favor?
Sorry.
Aye.
Opposed? Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1509 on second reading?
The bond ordinance making a supplemental appropriation of $500,000 for the construction of a new public safety building in and by this borough there, here in 2-4, authorized to be undertaken by the Boroughstone Harbor in the county of Cape May, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of $475,000 bonds or notes of the borough for financing such supplemental appropriation.
The public hearing on ordinance 1509 is open. Public hearing is closed.
Madam Mayor and Council, a motion of 1509 be passed on second reading in advance to third and final reading.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer.
Yes.
Mrs. Lane.
Yes.
Mrs. Rich.
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Krefcheck.
Yes.
Mr. Parzak.
Yes.
Will the clerk read the title only of ordinance 1509 on third and final reading?
A bond ordinance. A bond ordinance making a supplemental appropriation of five hundred thousand for the construction of a new public safety building.
Madam Mayor and Council, I motion that ordinance number fifteen oh nine be passed on third and final reading, adopted and published according to law.
Second. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen S two one two.
Madam Mayor and Council, I, uh, I gotta find my cheat sheet here. I'm, uh, yeah, I got that part. I recommend that resolution two thousand seventeen dash S dash two thousand, S dash two hundred and twelve be up for adoption.
Second.
This, uh, this resolution S two thousand twelve is for the purchase of a police Tahoe for the, the police department. It's to replace a two thousand eight vehicle with a hundred and thirty thousand miles on it.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen S two one three.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution two thousand seventeen dash S dash two one three for adoption.
Second.
Uh, this resolution authorizes refunding fifteen hundred dollars to Great Lakes Dredge and Dock Company, which they placed on deposit for a hydrant meter rental. They're requesting their refund, and that is it.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen S two fourteen.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution two thousand seventeen S two fourteen for adoption.
Second.
Uh, this is, uh, supporting sustainable purchasing policy. We already do most of that. It's minimizing environmental impacts such as pollution, use of water, energy, eliminating the, or reduce toxics that create hazards. Basically, we're already doing this, we just have to memorialize it.
Any discussion?
Karen, this is non-binding, right? This is a non-binding agreement? It's just something we, we try to follow when we can?
It's what we try to follow. It's, it's not an agreement, it's just a resolution. That's, this is what we're trying to do.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen S two fifteen.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution two thousand seventeen S two fifteen for adoption.
Second.
This is for a dump station, uh, grant in the amount of three thousand twenty-five dollars to, um, be put into our revenue.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen S two sixteen.
Madam Mayor, I offer resolution two thousand seventeen S two sixteen for adoption.
Second.
This is a transfer of monies within the budget, as we do every year at this time, where some departments didn't use what they budgeted and other departments need to finish out the year with additional funds.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Krafcheck?
Yes.
Mr. Parzak?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand seventeen S two seventeen.
Mayor, I offer resolution two thousand seventeen dash S dash two seventeen for adoption.
Second.
This, uh, this resolution is for the reappointment of a Class Two special law enforcement officer to serve from November seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, to December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Uh, this is to supplement Sergeant Jackson's squad.
Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?